October 18th Council Work Session, and I just want to begin by thanking all of you for your forbearance in this relocation because there's still an unresolved negotiation between the county and the Ask Me employees, and so out of respect for that, we're meeting off-site. And so, thank you for accommodating that, and I guess the plan is to do this for the next couple of meetings, so the public will know that. And our first order of business is discussion of the renaming of Broadway Plaza.
Thanks, Mayor, and turn it over to me. It is going?
Hi, I'm here today to report on the work of the Broadway Plaza Naming Committee, which you all appointed recently, and just for the benefit of the public and folks listening at home, I'll walk through sort of the path of how we arrived here. So, in April, Council initiated a process to look at renaming Broadway Plaza to Keesey Square. At that point, staff opened a public comment period, which remained open from June to September. On September 20th, that subject came back to you, along with all of the public feedback that we had received to date, and at that time, Council chose to appoint an ad hoc committee, which you can do under the naming policy, to make a recommendation on the renaming of the proposed, the proposal to rename Broadway Plaza to Keesey Square. So, each of you provided names to the mayor, and the mayor convened a group, which met two times, on October 4th and October 9th. Your direction was to come back to you within 45 days, and so, we're here today to talk about that. I want to thank all of the committee members by name, because they did carve out a significant amount of time and energy to provide a recommendation to you. And so, the committee members, as I mentioned, the mayor, of course, was on the committee, and they were Counselor Clark, Brittany Quick Warner, Carrie Thompson, Elliot Becker, John Iglesias, Suzie Stephan, Sherri Greening, Tim Mueller, and Jeff Geiger. So, this was the group that convened to look at the name of Ken Keesey, and there was a lot of discussion about Ken Keesey himself. There was also a discussion about other city facilities and what they had been named, and so, staff provided them information on every other city facility name, including parks. There were questions about the naming policy and how these things had transpired in the past, and because the policy was adopted in 2010, we don't actually have all, we don't have a lot of experience in using the naming committee, or, excuse me, the naming policy, and so, this is one of the first instances in which we've really had to refer to it, since you all adopted that seven years ago. So, the outcome of the committee was that they voted 7 to 2 to recommend to you that the Broadway Plaza be renamed Keesey Square. The full minutes are available in, and are included in the AIS, and then, in addition to that, they unanimously recommended that it be made clear to you that all of the committee members have an interest in seeing that the space becomes successful and welcoming to all in the future. That's a high-level summary of the committee's work, and I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Yes, thank you, and I also just want to add my gratitude to the members of the committee, because it was significant time commitment for them, and it was a hard conversation. They were not all on the same page, and so, I really appreciated the way they actually came together, at least in agreeing to disagree, but to do so respectfully and constructively. So, it was a good process. I think it was a good process. Mike may have another opinion, and he's first up, and I'll take anyone else. Chris, anybody else with a, need a, Claire? All right, Mike, take it away.
I won't comment on process, other than to say I appreciated the chance to participate. But I will say that I asked a couple of different ways, and in a very clarifying manner, I think it was clear, with me during the course of the second meeting, I believe, about the committee's charge. And my recommendation from the conversation that we had, the last conversation we had at the table, was changing my initial motion to match what Chris had said he would be more interested in doing, because I agreed with him after he said it, which was to use the ordinance, follow the process that it lays out, for us to do a more broad consideration in the right way of naming exercise. The way that, I don't, I did not submit a written language when I made that motion, so it was flowing with that conversation. And the way it came out written became the charge to the committee, and it was very clear that the committee was told to, they had a binary choice. It was either yes or no to Keesey Square as the name. It was not to consider any other names, or to consider any other alternatives to a yes-no answer to that simple question. I had thought that the charge was different than that, but I participated based on staff's understanding of the charge. So, I guess I would say to my colleagues, if you thought that the charge was different than what we did in that subcommittee, that may give us pause to consider what's next. Or I guess I would ask you to. Thank you.
All right, Chris?
Yeah, I think what actually came out of the conversation was a variety of different points of view. It would have been nice if they had considered, you know, were there other possible names? That was what caused me to kind of think about having a committee, was would there be some other options? If, I think if they had wanted to do that, they would have done it. I don't, you know, they may have taken their charge from what they felt that our conversation was, but the process is done, and the committee did their work, and I'm not going to second-guess the work that the committee did, nor the vote that they came up with. I'm just glad that we had that final step, for no other reason than I'm a huge believer that you measure twice before you cut once, and I think this provided that second important measure to make sure that we were making the right cut. So, whether it did exactly what we had all hoped it would do, or whether it, you know, had some nuance that wasn't there, I don't want to second-guess the committee. They came back with their recommendation, and I'm comfortable in supporting what they did, because I think that this is now measuring twice, so I can now make the cut.
Okay, thank you. Claire?
So, I want to thank the committee members as well, and the mayor, for how she went about convening the committee. I was absent for the meeting at which the motion was passed, so I can't speak to what Counselor Clark is raising, but I will ask staff if the process that was followed for the committee comports with the naming policy and how we are expected to carry out that work.
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I read through the minutes, and I also had a chance to speak with the person I had recommended for the, for the committee, and I think that, I mean, I'm just speculating, but while it may have been presented as a binary choi, choice between yes, name it after Keesey or don't, my reading of the membership of the committee is that if they had very strong feelings about, no, we really need to explore other options, and we need to be bringing other names forward, I think that would have been reflected in the conversation. My knowledge of some of these individuals is they are not people to be led around by the nose by a staff person, and have opinions and education and background to, which was part of the reason I think we chose them collectively to serve on this committee. So, I'm happy with the work. I'm happy that we had this step in the process. I think it was a good decision to do that, and I am supportive of their recommendation.
Eddie?
I didn't think we needed a committee. I do like the naming process, but it just says, it says you can have a committee if you want to. And I think Beth is the one who came up with our naming process. Is that correct? I think it's...
I don't know the history of who drafted it, but the council did vote on the naming.
I know, oh, we voted on it. I think it was excellent, but I was just giving credit to Beth for...
Oh, thank you.
I think she did the work, and I thought it was excellent.
It was a good thing.
But I didn't, but the committee was a matter of choice. I didn't think we needed it. Anyone who knows about this, who talks to me, they say, "Well, it was already Keesey Square." The public named it before that. It wasn't as if we had something brand-new to name. If we were going to name, suppose this room didn't already have a name, and we said, "We want to name it something," then I guess we would think of lots of possibilities. But when you have something that's already, this was already named by the public, and it was not a question of, "We have this space that nobody knows what to call, and what shall we name it?" So, I'm glad that they came up with the right answer, what I think is the right answer, but I think it was, it was already Keesey Square. That's what everybody calls it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to make the motion again, by the way?
We're not, let's let a few, yeah, let's, yeah, well, I'll ask a process question in a minute, but let's let people speak.
Yeah, so, again, thanks to the committee. This probably was not an easy question to deal with, and to put yourself out there with an opinion, so I really appreciate their willingness to serve on this committee. I would have also, along with Counselor Clark, appreciated if they had spent a little time, at least asking the question, is there someone else that we could have considered? I mean, I'm not surprised with the recommendation that came back, but I think sometimes asking those questions, even if you know the answer, is very valuable, and I think this maybe just comes back to, we need to be, if that was the council's understanding about what we were asking them to do, we should have been more clear about it, and so, I think that's maybe on us, that we should have really just been very clear about what we want you to look at and what we want brought back, so maybe that's just a learning experience. But, but, thank you so much to their work, and I plan on supporting the work and the decision that they made.
Any other comments? No? All right. So, a process, so I want to thank you for your comments and recognize, oh, Mike, you're on for a second, and I recognize your frustration with this process. It was my understanding that we had to make a recommendation on the motion about whether to rename it Keesey, and so, we proceeded on that. There were a couple of names floated, but nothing that picked up any real traction. So, no one, people floated some things, and nothing, they didn't, didn't get any traction. So, I think coming up with an alternative name would have required a longer process. I think it's not likely that we would have done that within a 45-day timeframe to get back to council. But that said, we did what we did. So, Mike, second round?
Well, I would just, just to clarify, it was brought up, should we consider another name? And the answer was given, no, we should not. We should vote yes or no on this question. So, let's be real clear, no other names were considered, or were, we were instructed not to have other names considered. Now, I agree with Claire, that had we been instructed, shall we consider that we are going to take another day and consider other names? I think the result would have been 6 to 3, but I thought there were eight of us that put people out there, but I guess that's another question altogether. But it would have still been 6 to 3 because of the strong feelings of those nominees who walked into the room. So, I just, I guess I would hesitate when we do this. If we think of this as a central part of our community that is welcoming to all and representative to all, I would just caution us, because there are strong feelings about this. With the emails that we received, it was a 60-40 for and against, and even in this special committee that had a number of people in favor of it, it was not unanimous. And so, we're going to name what some consider to be our town square with something that doesn't make everyone feel like a part of the community, and that's the part that's difficult for me. So, I will vote against.
Any, any other comments? Emily?
I've been in favor of naming Keesey Square from the beginning. It's what it's ne, it's called in print by the city and the chamber and other groups. So, I don't really think that naming a Keesey Square is going to change anything, since people already know it as Keesey Square, and it seems like when we decided to make it official, then there was an outcry about it. So, I wonder how, how much it really affected people detrimentally, as far as coming downtown, if all along, nobody had brought up, this is not a good role model. So, I think that it has been accepted by the entire city, and maybe we should have asked for other names, but really, it's already called Keesey Square. We're building a lot of stuff, there'll be a lot of opportunities to name other things, and I think at that point, we should have a broad range of suggestions. And I will point out that Brittany Quick Warner, representing the chamber, voted in favor of it, and she said, "Because she didn't want to spend any more time on this, but she wanted to get on with making Keesey Square wonderful." So, and I agree with that, so I'm going to vote for it.
Yes.
So, just one last thought. You know, I think we can all agree that the reason the de facto name of the square became Keesey Square is because the city provided the opportunity for a statue to be placed there. I was not on council when that happened. I don't know all the history of how that occurred, but I think once that went in there, that became the name, and that was a huge factor in this happening. And so, I think for those folks in the community and on this council who are unhappy about this outcome, I think for all of us, it's a lesson in how we approach those opportunities, and how we think about the future ramifications of, you know, a wonderful gift of public art, but what, what will be the impact on the space going forward of having that piece of art there?
Yes, I would agree. That's the important learning curve, is by putting the statue there, we effectively made this, made this, created this circumstance. And I, and I said this to the committee, and I will say it one more time for the benefit of, you know, anybody who's listening, is that the, that the sculpture itself is a beautiful piece of work, and it is a man reading to children, and to have that in a central place in our business district is a positive thing. And so, I think we should sort of embrace the theme of that statue as a positive thing and, and move forward. So, with that, I am assuming we are ready for a vote? Did you have another? Do I have another? No?
You have to make a motion.
Oh, do we have, oh, we, oh, it's gone, right? We need a new motion. Okay, gotcha. Go for it.
If Mike doesn't mind, I will.
Please.
Thank you, Mike. A move to change the name of Broadway Plaza to Keesey Square, and to repeal Resolution Number 4505.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Opposed? One, and it passes. So, thank you very much, and congratulations. We threw that one. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Next up?
I'll just turn it to Denny and his team.
Good afternoon. In addition to the renaming question on Keesey Square, if you recall, council at the same time also passed a motion that would initiate a metro plan, or did initiate a metro plan redesignation, and a concurrent rezoning of now Keesey Square to public land. And so, at the last work session where council was discussing the renaming question, a lot, there were a lot of questions about where we are with our Project for Public Spaces work relative to Keesey Square. What's the process in front of us? What's the process for rezoning the property? And then, also, some questions about how this overlaps with other planning work, kind of the rezoning work, other planning work that council has initiated, neighborhood planning, urban reserves, that kind of work. So, what we're going to do is, I'm going to ask Will just to kind of give you a little recap of kind of where we've been and where we're going with Keesey Square and a lot of that Project for Public Spaces work. Alyssa's going to talk a little bit about the rezoning process, the metro plan reset, designation process, and then, we can open it up for discussion. So, Will?
Thank you. Over the last couple of years, you've done a lot of listening and a lot of work on the park blocks, Keesey Square, all my notes are wrong, and other open spaces in downtown. This past spring, Project for Public Spaces shared their recommendations with you, after collecting ideas and feedback from stakeholders and other members of the community. First, they articulated that Keesey Square need not carry the full symbolic weight of a city center. That's a legacy to reinforce in the park blocks, which means that Keesey Square can focus on fulfilling another community need, being the heart of our revitalizing downtown commercial area. Project, excuse me, Project for Public Spaces repeatedly underscored lighter, quicker, cheaper as a prudent path for exploring change. Temporary activations are faster to implement and can change experiences and perceptions ahead of long-term solutions. This summer, city staff and community partners employed this approach, which included piloting picnic tables, live performances, and a midweek beer garden, all in addition to the food carts, which are actually our longstanding lighter, quicker, cheaper interventions in this space. Project for Public Spaces continued with the recommendation that physical changes eventually replace the initial experiments in order to support a greater level of programming and make the spaces easier to access and manage. For Keesey Square, they focused on the importance of bringing activity to the south and east perimeter of the space, and identified a few options to achieve this, including a narrow, lightweight park pavilion along the edges that could serve as an indoor-outdoor anchor for the plaza. As we look to the future, our first steps will be to assess the past. The pilot projects from this summer were accompanied by a monitoring program and survey, and staff will return next month to share the results of that with you. It's too rough, too rushed to implement significant changes in this space by next spring, and I think there's a benefit of having another summer of experimentation and assessment with focused lighter, quicker, cheaper projects. This puts the target on spring of 2019, and allows plenty of time to work with stakeholders on a strategy and have appropriate community involvement. So, that's the summary of where we've been and a path forward, and Alyssa can take over from here.
Great. So, as Denny mentioned, I'm going to talk more about the metro plan and zone change process, and then, just kind of what, what the, about zoning and public uses and public land in general. So, to, what you all initiated was metro plan diagram amendment and a concurrent zone change. Terms of process, that is kind of one of our more involved or processes, because it involves changing an adopted plan, so that's a, that's a pretty big deal. It typically takes about six to nine months. There is a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Before the public hearing, we send notice pretty far and wide, within 500 feet. We have to send notice to the state, there's staff analysis and legal review. Planning Commission makes a recommendation to city council, and then, so you all would hold a public hearing and then take action on that. It's also appealable to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. That is not included in that six-to-a-month timeline, so that just gives you an idea about how long the process takes. In terms of the zoning of the property of Keesey Square, I'm going to get used to saying that as well here, so it is zoned C3, which is major commercial. And public uses are essentially allowed in all of our zones throughout the city, and if you think about it, that makes sense. We have schools all over the city, we have fire stations all over the city, there's parks, there's community centers, so, you know, it makes sense that they're allowed in the majority of our zones. Just a couple of examples of other lands that are not zoned public land. We are sitting smack dab in the middle of C3-zoned land right now, so the library itself is zoned major commercial. Our downtown fire station is also zoned commercial, our, the police headquarters, our general office, we have fire stations in commercial, industrial, residential. Parks fall in several residential zones, and we also have some parks that are on public land. So, property doesn't need to be zoned public land for it to be used by a public agency for a public use. However, if property is zoned for public land, it is generally limited to a public use. So, whereas, you know, not a great example, but we're sitting in major commercial. If we decided in 50 years from now, we actually want a more magnificent library than this, and we're going to move it across the street or around the way, you know, the city could sell this property off, and it could be used for whatever, you know, whatever commercial uses. If it was zoned public land, it would be a lot more limited in who could use that. So, the public land is really intended for public uses operated by the public agency that owns the land. And, you know, and that could be offices, libraries, parks, post offices, fire stations, schools, kind of that general range of uses. It also allows for some accessory uses to that, such as small-scale commercial uses to primary, that primarily serve the users of the site. So, if you think about the Amazon pool, there is a small concession stand there, that's a small-scale commercial use. The public land zone also allows for fairs, festivals, special events, think about the fairgrounds. It's a perfect example of that. And then, there are some specific cases where if the public agency declares the land is surplus, they can allow some other uses. Those require kind of special consideration. So, the Keesey Square is currently zoned C3 major commercial, just like the library, and that really allows for a broad range of commercial uses, and it also allows government uses, parks, and open space. So, the current use of that site is really in alignment with that, that existing zoning. If it were rezoned to public land, like I said, the public land zone is more limiting, and it's really intended for public uses by that public agency. So, you know, it may be that some of the uses that we're considering may not quite meet the intent of the public land zone, and so, that's just a consideration to keep in mind, particularly since we're not entirely sure, you know, what the future plans are for that site. So, I will leave it at that.
And I'll just, in closing, there's a few considerations that I think, and they're all really kind of revolve around timing. You know, one of the questions was, you know, what's current, currently on our planning plate, and there's a lot of council-directed work around neighborhood planning that we've, we just launched River Road, our River Road planning effort, for example. We're launching urban reserves. We're actually trying to staff up to get that work done, so there, there are some overlaps in all of that work and our ability to get all of that work done, and I think that is a legitimate consideration. The second really is, Will talked about lighter, quicker, cheaper. You know, our path right now is to continue experimenting with lighter, quicker, cheaper, and then, work with the community to bring forward a community solution, a permanent solution. I think we all agree that the current design isn't the ultimate design that maybe we want to see. So, we can do that under its current zoning, we could do that under public land. However, we don't really know what the outcome is there, so it's hard to speculate today on what is the best zoning, considering we don't really know what its final destination is. So, I think that's a timing consideration as well. I think the third thing really is, is our goal, and Counselor Sumpel said, "We want it to be wonderful," and I totally agree. I think the community wants it to be wonderful. We need the community to gather together to come up with a solution for this space, and our partners, our merchants, our property owners, the community at large, we need to all bring them together and rally around this space and make it wonderful. And so, we, we have some concerns about trying to do that at the same time. We're in a, maybe a somewhat divided... We're in a, maybe a somewhat divisive conversation about zoning because as the renaming, as the rezoning goes, those conversations, you'll have people for and against those kinds of things. So there are some considerations as well there. Reality is, regardless of what it's on, our intent really is to try to make it wonderful. That's our goal, and we're going to continue pushing forward on all that work, so.
Great, thank you very much. So I have three in the queue, Mike, Betty, and then Claire. Take it away, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Refresh my recollection if we have started the process for altering the zoning there, because I didn't hear you say that just now.
Yes. The council actually, they actually initiated a metro plan.
You initiated the metro plan amendment. We haven't yet set the first public hearing.
Can you tell me about the broad, I can't see a clock here, about the broad steps that are next and their timing?
So the first thing we would need to do is schedule a planning commission public hearing. That has to probably be at least 45 days out because we have required notice that.
From now?
Yeah, that we have required notice that we would need to send prior to that. We need enough backup time to be able to do that. And we'd hold that public hearing, and then the planning commission would deliberate most likely at a meeting a couple of weeks after that, where they would provide a recommendation. We'd have to prepare the ordinance before you all had a public hearing. So then there'd be a council hearing, and then there would be council action.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm disappointed that our colleague isn't here. I was under the impression from a very short conversation, I didn't get all the details of it, but that Greg had a motion around this, and I wanted to respect that, but he's not here. And I certainly can't speak to his ideas because we didn't have a full conversation. I was like, oh, there he is, awesome. Well, I got to, I wonder if I have that power in other ways. That was, that was pretty awesome, right? I start talking, he walks in. Wow, I got to remember that one. I will then look forward to hearing his thoughts and conversation about whether or not we ought to have a motion on this. I would say, though, that with the just recently completed Envision Eugene process, my recollection is that we barely squeaked in with enough commercial land and undeveloped commercial, and that if we were to start designating it something else, we would then be in a deficit of a similar analysis. And certainly as we move forward, we would have to be looking for more commercial land to bring in. Would that, in broad brushstrokes, would that be accurate?
Do you know the answer to that, Alex?
Because it's publicly owned, it's not really included in like our inventory of vacant commercial land.
But if we took, if we took commercial lands out of commercial use, essentially by what you just said, and put it into public use, then we'd be shy of commercial lands that previously existed.
It's not included in that same bucket of commercial land because it's publicly owned.
We didn't count it.
Yeah, it didn't get counted, so it wouldn't be subtracted.
I'm just reaching here, all right. I will look forward to hearing my friends' comments on this. Thank you very much.
Do you want to be in the queue?
Are we still, are we still on the naming queue?
Nope.
Did that, passed that. Is this about the zoning?
Zoning.
Yeah, I'll be in the queue on the zoning.
Okay, I'll get you on the queue.
Yes.
All right, Betty.
Okay, so Mike's friend is here now. Guess I'm not Mike's friend.
Aren't you my friend too, Betty?
Yes, we agree on this, don't we? So I, if it's six to nine months, I hope you started at the time that we, that the motion was passed. Would that be included in the six to nine months? Are we already a few months into that?
We are already a few months into that. That would be, that, starting it from, you know, backing up from the hearing to sending the notice.
So it may be six to nine months from when the motion was passed, which was a few months ago, I think.
Be at least nine months from that, yeah.
Well, for the limiting, the reason I want this passed is to limit the uses. To limit, we were close to having a building take up that public space, and that is what we want to prevent. And I think the naming, renaming, or the formal naming is the first step toward preserving it as public land. I don't know if everyone here knows or not, but there was a plan back when Dennis Taylor was city manager to open the walls. And the owner, there's one owner of those two properties that the Project for Public Space recommended be opened, and the owner of both those buildings would like it to be opened. And I think that we ought to start work on working with the owner, Ali Imami, to open the walls. That is something that's been in the works for a long time. A lot of people think it ought to happen, including the owner of the buildings, including this group to whom we paid $160,000. So why don't we listen? I think that's the next thing we ought to do. And I do think that the rezoning is important in order to limit what can happen there. It is important to keep it as public space that everyone can use. And I, it seems that, I don't know whether staff wants to be, whether you want to keep it for something else or not, but I get that impression that there's a push to keep the possibility of a building open.
I think our issue is not so much the use. We do have a couple of interests. One is flexibility, not knowing where the rest of the conversation goes over the next many months when we think about downtown and continue that conversation, to keep that open. And the other thing is just a practical resource issue. It's time-intensive, resource-intensive. And so this really becomes a little bit of which is the higher priority for the council as we move forward with the use of planning resources.
Okay, well, in my opinion, this is a high priority, and also in the opinion of the group that you hired to look at it at downtown. Apparently, it's a high priority. So I think it's something that should be, that we should be working on as, I don't know how much time it takes, but as soon as possible. And I think it's really important. It's the next step to keeping this as a public space. And obviously, somebody from staff should be talking to the owner of the buildings. Who, that's, that just seems elementary, that.
We have been talking to Mr. Imami. We have recently, I think Will and some others have met with him.
I've had a couple, a couple of conversations with him in the last month.
I saw the papers he had from years ago that were, with the plans which the city was approving at that time, but then decided that it would be revocable. And he, so that was a problem. But I think, I think people are smart enough to figure out the answers to those problems. Thank you.
Okay, Claire?
Thank you. So I had some questions and some comments. So what is the designation, the zoning for the parks blocks? You did not include them in our list.
I didn't check the designation, but I can't, they are zoned PL, public land.
And we provide space for Saturday market to engage in commercial activities there?
Yes, but that is kind of falls under the temporary or seasonal uses for the fairs, festivals, and special events.
Okay, and then what about the food carts that we've encouraged to be there now?
You know, I think the distinction there is the scale. The park blocks are a lot larger, and that's not the only use occurring on those sites. Just not, you know, not unlike Amazon. There is a small, the pool, there is a concession stand there, but the main function is the pool.
So kind of what I'm hearing from the information you've given us so far, that some of those ideas that we've discussed for Keyzee Square that might result from opening up the walls and creating some kind of commercial activity there in terms of, you know, coffee plays, mini farmer's market was one of the ideas at some point. It sounds like you're saying that could be precluded from happening if we change the designation to public lands.
That's one of our concerns is that when, and the city manager mentioned keeping the opportunities as broad as possible. You know, if you take the four food carts that are there now, you expand it to five or six, then pretty much the primary use of that space is commercial. And I don't know that that would meet the public land intent. So there are some issues that I think we need to consider. If we open up the walls and that commercial activity spills out into the plaza, there are some questions of whether that would work in public land, C3. So I think, I think what we're trying to say is that, give us an opportunity to figure out what the final destination might be, and then we can figure out whether public land or C3 worked for that dest. It's not, you know, we don't, you know, our goal is not to build a building there today. I think, you know, we need the time in the next 12 to 18 months to figure out what is this space going to become? And then we can have a discussion about the zoning, I think is kind of our message.
Yeah. Well, I definitely think there are other planning priorities for our community besides that space. The Partnership for Public Spaces was only looking at downtown, and they weren't considering the other issues that we have in the broader city when they made that recommendation as being a high priority. It was a priority within the scope of downtown. You mentioned the River Road Santa Clara planning, which got kicked off last night. And then the urban reserves piece that many at this table have said, "What's that happening?" And folks in the community have too. So for me personally, this is a very low priority. But it sounds like from the motion we made, we have started this process. So can we stop it at some point? Or, you know, if we are having concerns about resources, you know, what are our options in terms of? Or this thing that I just pointed out that Counselor Taylor would love to see these walls opened up and some commercial activity there, but if we redesignate it to public lands, then we might not be able to do that. So I think there's a lot of complexity here with this question.
You certainly can make a motion to either just, you know,
suspend.
suspend until further direction processing the metro plan in public land. So you could just make a whole new motion.
Okay. I'm not prepared to do that myself, but. And then, you know, I think this idea of opening up the walls was a good one. I had heard that Mr. Imami didn't want to do it in the past because there's this provision that it can be rescinded, which I've heard from other developers downtown, that that's just what happens with downtown development. There is this contingency that the city could come back later and say, "Nope, you need to change that." And he wasn't willing to take that risk. So I don't know if that issue can be resolved for him or not. I mean, he's the only one who can decide that. So those are my questions and comments right now. Thank you.
Okay, great. Emily?
Thank you. I keep hearing that we don't know what we're going to do with it, and it takes 12 to 18 months to figure that out. So what are the possibilities? What are the range of things that could would be considered?
I can speak to that. The, the direction from the community work that Project for Public Spaces did, and then the recommendation that they made is that, is that we look at activation on those walls. And so one way to achieve that, and they mentioned this in their report, as you've said already, is to open up the walls. Another recommendation that I referred to would be to put a thin-liner building on the space, which with the goal of activating, creating faces onto the buildings that are there. And that would be, that would be one option that would not involve the adjacent properties. And so there's, so that, that would avoid any, any difficulties that might occur with collaboration. Those are, so those are two different approaches. Other ideas could come forward that are, that are working within the space in some other way. We could extend the food carts and try to figure out a way to, to make those more permanent. So it's, I think that the, those are the, kind of the range of options. I'm sure there's many things I'm missing, and the idea is to reach out to greater creative resource, you know, talking to more people and bringing more ideas in. The, the intent of the work that Project for Public Spaces did was to focus on the activities and the needs that people want to see in that space. That's why they refer to their work as a placemaking plan rather than a final design. And so the, the work that we want to do now is to take the kernels that they brought and to see the best way to implement those through very specific designs that would then lead to final implementation.
If we opened the doors, that doesn't necessarily mean that the square has commercial entities on it. It just would be a door opening onto the square.
Yeah, I mean, the opening of the walls is one solution, but for that to be successful, you have to have active use inside those walls. And so the ideal scenario really would be to rethink some of that space and make it an active space that spills out into the, into the plaza and spills into the commercial space. Just opening the walls in and of itself is probably not going to generate activity. So the conversations we're having with Mr. Imami is really around reimagining the building, and could it become more active? And could there be, you know, food services there or something to make it a more active space? I think those, those things need to go together. That's one option. There's other, other ways to activate the space. And, you know, if you're there in a nice day during lunch with the food carts for the two hours during lunch, it's a really, really vibrant space. But at the other times, when the food carts kind of shuttered, their food carts, it's not the same. It kind of empties out, and it feels a little bit dark and vacant. So I think the path we're on is really about activation and bringing people there. And it's, it's more than one thing. It's about how the space is managed and programmed and commercialized and all those things together. So that's the path we're on right now.
But I don't want it commercialized. And I don't notice that you listed making it park-like as one of the possibilities. It's very important to have closets where people can meet and socialize, have discourse on what's happening. I think we need to make it more attractive as a gathering place. It's public, right now, we're all using it. The food carts, I'm sorry, they might be delicious, but they're really ugly. And they're not inviting to come and be there other times. The benches have been working, but, you know, they're all bunched up at night. But I see people sitting there in the afternoon when I walk by. So I, I realize that we can do that with the space now, although it's not on your list. And I also heard you say that if we do make it into public land, it could still be used for a building, such as offices, or a post office, or some of those other things. So making it public land does not move it towards being protected as an open space. Is that correct?
As a public land, it could only be used by a public agency. So, right, you could put a fire station there. Would you probably, but.
My goal is to not have a building there, to not have it be commercial space, but to protect it for people to be outside. As the city gets more and more dense, those places are becoming more and more valuable. I understand that right now, people see it as an attractive, attractive to nuisance people, but we haven't put any money into it. There's no plants there, there's not enough seeding. There's no plants there, there's not enough seeding. It's a very boring square, with really bright lights at night. And I think that's been done on purpose. But if we want other people to come to it, we need to make it inviting as a gathering spot. And if it becomes commercial, that's not going to happen. So putting, you know, stores around the edge, or more food carts, I think is against the idea of, of keeping it open for, for people. And so, it sounds like neither choice will, will guarantee that, that it won't be a building.
Either zone is going to allow some sort of building, whether, you know, and it would allow, either zone will allow public uses that you're talking about. I think, you know, in terms of flexibility, the existing zoning allows more flexibility for some of the other uses.
The council would have to weigh in on any public building, any commercial building. We couldn't, you know, it'd have to be, property would have to be sold for a commercial. So that, I don't feel like that's the path we're on, and council hasn't, hasn't gotten in this direction to be on that path. So, council would control that outcome if anything ever got built on there. And that's not really, when I say commercialized, I just mean, food carts are opening up the walls that spills out. Those are all options that we want to consider. There is the, the park option, where it's just public space. You still need to activate it and manage it, according to Project for Public Spaces, to make it successful. I don't think we can just redesign it, and that in and of itself will bring people there. You have to probably manage it and program it, and we'll, we'll continue to look at those options regardless of whether it's food carts, a park, open walls. I think all of those options are still on the table.
I'm going to need a second round. Okay. Chris?
Thank you. You know, if I just cut to the chase, a lot of this debate is centered around, I don't want a building on that square. And I hear that. And I think we've had that conversation here. And my sense is, the council has said, okay, we're not going to build a building there. But if we're not going to build a building there, I still want to see that space utilized effectively as some sort of a gathering, event, activity space, which is what we're talking about. But I think the movement to get it rezoned is out of fear that if you don't rezon it, somehow, at some point, we're going to build a building there. And then we're just secretly holding off what's inevitably going to be, the council building a building there. I don't see that as the outcome necessarily. I would like to maintain as much flexibility, so we can ensure that that space, without a building on it, has the maximum usefulness and capability as an event, gathering, activity space. And some of the ideas that I have seen, you know, knocking out walls, putting in some, some, you know, opportunities for limited commercial, I think could be very limited with a, with a public space designation. And I see the public space designation as a way to keep a building out. But in the effort to keep a building out, you also keep a lot of other things out. So, we need to kind of come to grips with the fact that there's not a secret plan to build a building there. And that anything short of a public space designation is going to just delay the inevitable building a building there. I'm not interested in building a building there anymore. I would like to see that space preserved as viable activity space. I've been persuaded that it's downtown, it has a life as a public space, a gathering space, and I'd like to see it stay that way. So I don't have any secret plan to build a building there. But on the other hand, I want to ensure there's enough flexibility in the space to, to open up walls, put in maybe a small roof, have some sort of interesting things going on. I think, you know, a table and a couple of umbrellas aren't going to do it for me. That's kind of what we have now, and I don't think it works as well. So I want to see some really ambitious ideas for how you can make that space, still a gathering space, no building there, but still able to do some vibrant kinds of things. And I think that, we don't have to act now, there is no rush. I don't sense this council is just watching the clock to figure out when we can put up a building. But I do think there is a value in thinking what realistically and attractively we could do there, to make that a much more successful space than it is now. So I'm not in a rush to rezon it, I'm not planning to build a building there, so I don't feel that need to get it rezoned. But I do feel a great need to do the best we can with that as a gathering, public, event, activity space.
Hey, Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Apologize for being late, I had another meeting that blew up on me. That's another story. You know, I, I am almost in total agreement with Councilor Pryor in this, in this arena. And I'll, I'll tell you why. I'm just going to take us back a little ways. When I moved here 32 years ago, there was a building on that, on that location. And then the building was torn down. And then there was a fountain over there. And then there was nothing. And then there was, the sculpture came in. And that reframed what that space was. So now it's Kezzi Square. Officially, I assume that's what everybody voted for, before I got here. That was going to be my vote as well, just so that you can record that. But, my, you know, my issue here is this. I think it should remain as a commercial space, to give us the kind of flexibility that we need, to be able to plan and program that space accordingly. I think that one of the problems that we have with us being drilled in on one space here, or another space here downtown, which we quite often do, and have done over the years, is because we have lacked a broader vision about what this, the center of this community is going to look like over the next 20, 30, or 40 years. I asked someone recently, it's, you know, maybe someone's in the crowd here, that I asked that question to. You know, what is your vision? What do you think that Eugene, downtown Eugene, our community's going to look like in 2037? And when I ask that question to people, people are like, huh? What, what do you mean? And then they have to stop, and they have to really think deeply about what that is. And I think that we, we really need to think deeply about that, those issues. I go, I've been back to my home city in Cleveland, back in June, and the, the space that used to be Public Square, there's not, and there's all kinds of big buildings around it, has now been converted over into a park, and they closed off the street. The exact opposite of what we did in Eugene years ago, with opening up the streets, and opening up the mall, and creating more space for, you know, commercial activity and people to circulate in there. So I would be in favor of, and after the second round, proposing that we suspend any of our activities with regard to moving forward to any rezoning, and do that indefinitely. If the city attorney can help craft that language.
We're working on it now. Thank you. And Jennifer?
Yeah, so I, it, I agree. I think it seems like this is, discussion is a little early, when we haven't really nailed down what we want to do in this space. And it's my understanding that if we were to change this to public land, a future council could change it again, back to commercial, I assume that's correct? So, really, no matter what we do, we're not saving it for the rest of eternity. We have to, you know, trust that future leaders are going to take what we've done, hopefully made a wonderful space, and, and they're going to, you know, continue to make that wonderful space, and maybe it will change over the decades. And giving them the flexibility to be able to do that, I think is important. So, I would support suspending this action at this time.
We have a few councils with the second round, but I just want to, I just want to go back to this one point again. When we're talking about this space sharing both sort of open, free activity, programmable space, and possibly having some more commercial uses along the walls, is there within, say the public lands designation, is there a sort of percentage that is the kick, that what, the amount of space that's allowable to be commercialized?
You know, it's not, there's not a specific number called out, and so we'd actually have to see what the specific design was, to make that determination.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you. All right, second round, Emily, then Mike, then Betty. Take it away, Emily.
It's not giving them permission to get something done. It's giving them permission to present different things, and it's up to us to decide. The last almost building came up really fast, and that was fairly surprising. And, a lot of people were against it, but there wasn't a lot of time to mobilize their dislike of it. My biggest problem is that it's open space, it's open 24/7. And I've asked about this, and still don't know, but I don't think that there's other spaces that are owned by the city, that aren't closed at 11 o'clock, because they're a park or something else. So, in my knowledge right now, now that the old Fed closes at 11, and free speech closes at 11, the Kezzi Square is the only central, if not the only place, where we can practice freedom to assemble and have discourse. So, is there a way to keep it, or someplace, open all the time? And I had thought that making it public land would be a step towards doing that. But, but that's my true goal, is to keep a centralized place where people can gather. So can you give me any input on that?
Yeah.
The, the zoning in the Metro Plan designation doesn't dictate whether it's open or closed. So, you could have it zoned public land, and if the council chose to designate it as a park, even if it's zoned public land, it would close at 11. So even with it designated as commercial, there's no hours that apply to it. And that was something council discussed over six years ago, and chose not to go down that path at that time. So, the designation and the zone doesn't dictate that in any way.
Is there anything that would? Is there any way to protect an area for keeping it open 24/7?
Well, the way that's happened is the lack of something to the contrary. So, the public space, just like our sidewalks there, and I know gathering on a sidewalk is different, but our sidewalks don't close, because nothing says they do. So for parks, if we didn't have the park rules that said that they closed at 11, they would be open. So the lack of the imposition of the hours keeps it open.
So then, for eternity, I would have to protest any change in that, too, to keep my ideal.
So it would be a, so if you were to say, adopt a code provision that says it's open 24 hours, then that would be a code provision that could be changed by another council, just like if a council prior to this had put the 11 o'clock closure hour on it, that would be a code provision the council could have lifted. So, any imposition or lack of imposition would be done through the code. And right now, there is no hours to it. So, there's nothing to do or not to do, I guess.
So rezoning would not affect my concern either way?
No.
Okay, and since public land could have a building on it, and commercial could have a building on it, my efforts are better spent fighting commercialism.
It's not everywhere.
All right. Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. The Subcommittee on Naming just recommended unanimously, which is an interesting word when you consider the committee, unanimously, that we do something more interesting, more worthwhile, more vibrant with this space. It's my opinion that when it rains, and it's dark, and, you know, it's not lunchtime, that this is dead space, right now. So I look forward to something more interesting and vibrant being done there. And it seems to me, if we remain on the course we are on, we will make that job harder, not easier. So I would be in favor of supporting, and I'll second Greg's motion with regard to suspending this process. Suspending it doesn't say, we won't maybe change our mind and go back to doing it again in the future. But right now, we're going to suspend it, so that we can come up with the best options for how to make it more lively there, which is what everybody wants. And because staff's got more important work to do, like the River Road and Santa Clara, and other pieces. So because of that, I'll, I'll be happy to support your motion.
All right. And Betty?
Okay. I don't think there's anything more important than downtown, that's, that's everybody's neighborhood, it's important to everyone. And I think we know what could make it more lively. When you talk about what would happen if you opened the doors, opened the walls, that we already have a very active doughnut shop on one of those walls. I can see people coming through the doors with their doughnuts, and sitting out there in the seats we're going to provide. And Mr. Amami does plan to do something else with, if he can have the walls open, with that side of, with the north side of his building, that would have people going in and out. Which gives you some commercial, but doesn't turn the space into a commercial space. But it gives it, it gives it, everyone could use the space, and people who want to have a doughnut, or have a drink maybe, could come out there. And people who want to sit there and talk a while, then go over to the barn light and have a drink, could do that, too. And if we get rid of our silly restrictions on carrying a drink across the street, maybe they could go over to the barn light and come back with a beer, and sit there. I think we, by opening the walls, we don't, we don't restrict anything, we, we open it up. And I do think that if it's public lands, it would be more difficult to put a big office building in than it is now. Is that true?
That is true.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, I have Greg, which we know has a motion. Did you want a third round, Emily? Can I let her have her third round before you go? Okay. Go for it.
I have trouble with this, but I also would like to have planning, move along with some projects that have been abandoned and usurped. So, that's another impetus for me to support postponing it, but, but mostly, my concerns are not addressed by rezoning.
All right. All right. Greg?
Oh, I just thought about, about what Betty just said, and having Willamette turn it to Bourbon Street West. Would be, would be kind of a trap.
I second that motion.
But I don't think that that would be an appropriate motion at this time. Maybe at a later date, Betty. But, I move to direct the city manager to suspend the Metro Plan Amendment and zoning process for Kezzi Square initiated in April 2017.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I'm totally opposed to it, but that's all I'll say.
Hey, all, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, opposed, two, it passes. Thank you all very much. That's a hard conversation, and I believe we are done, half an hour early.